Great. I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is September 22nd, 2021. I will note for the record that all three members of the board are present. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Giffens, and myself, Julie Thomas. And we'll begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great. Thank you so much. And we will now move on to department updates. First up is Administrator Ms. Pottle. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to start this morning with a testing update. The gravity test site did open yesterday. They did have a few hiccups, and this is a drive-through clinic, which means that weather can change things and may affect some of the hours and their availability. So as we have a very rainy day today, just be understanding and realize that if you get there and they have had to close, that is the reason. So I just say that because it is a drive-through clinic, and anytime you have that, things can happen, especially with the weather. But the location is at 500 North Profile Parkway. They are open Tuesday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Results are back by 5:00 p.m. the following day, and that's true even on the weekend. It is free. They may bill your insurance. So if they ask you for insurance information, it is simply so that they can bill if your insurance will pay for it. There should not be any charge to you. And they are doing PCR testing. At this time, there isn't any rapid testing, but we expect that that may come in the coming weeks. So that's your local new testing option. The Indianapolis Motor Speedway also opened this week. They are doing testing and vaccinations at the Speedway through October 30th. That clinic is open noon to 8:00 p.m. They do prefer pre-registering, and if you're doing that, you can search on that map with the ZIP code of 46222, and then that will pull up the Motor Speedway for you. So the ZIP code again is 46222. They are doing both PCR and rapid antigen testing. They also have Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine available, and they have flu shots available while supplies last. So you can go to the Speedway and get lots of things taken care of this in the next month. In terms of vaccination, Miller Drive continues to have Moderna Mondays, and we have added additional days to the clinic on Miller Drive as well. Again, you can visit ourshot.in.gov to schedule your appointment, to see what times are available. And we continue to do outreach clinics. For example, today, we have staff that will be at the 50-plus Expo at Switchyard Park, and that begins at 3:00 p.m., I believe, today. And we continue to do our school outreaches. I will say that the school's got an extremely slow start. We had some schools with no uptake for the COVID vaccine. That's increasing a little bit. And then, of course, we will go back to do those second doses and to have flu vaccine in the schools in a few other weeks. So our nurses will be in our schools in the area for the next few months. So very busy with our schools. Booster dose and authorization. I know this is in the news and want to just share a little bit of information about that. So the FDA Verpac, and that's a committee, did recommend Pfizer vaccine for 65-plus and those with high-risk occupation or conditions, but that's just kind of the first step in the process, right? And so today, they are meeting for an EUA to review the recommendations from that previous meeting and issue an EUA, an emergency use authorization for booster doses. We're expecting that to come at any time, because the next step is that the CDC Advisory Council on Immunization Practices would then meet to determine what those occupations are, what the medical conditions are, all of those other things that we need. And they are actually scheduled to meet today and tomorrow. So stay tuned for that. That is things that are happening as we speak, and by the time this is done, we could have moved to the next part of the process. So just wanted to share that. I know people are anxious about boosters. They're not yet available. We don't have all the details. Assuming that they become available soon, we still don't have the details on who, what conditions, those kinds of things. And I know I've had a lot of questions with, I don't know what the conditions are, and that's because they haven't been determined for these boosters. So that's why. I do want to note that the third dose is available for those with moderate and severe immunocompromised conditions. They are eligible now for a third dose of Pfizer or Moderna after 28 days from their second dose. And that is for people with those very specific conditions that compromise their immune system. So if you think you might fall into that category, go ahead and talk to your provider, and you can schedule an appointment for that. The booster doses are different. These are doses we're talking about for people who are fully vaccinated, but over time, the vaccine effectiveness starts to wane. And so we're looking at additional dose to kind of boost that protection back up. And that's what we're talking about. It's being discussed right now, and decisions are expected to come. In terms of the metric advisory, we will, again, remain in orange this week. I expect to see just a very slight increase in our cases per 100,000. So, you know, it's not a big increase. That's the good part of that, but it's still over 200. In our cases, our positivity rate, I think, will tick up just a little bit as well. Our vaccination rate as of yesterday was just under 60%. It's 59.5% fully vaccinated. So please, let's get that well over that 60%, but I've been waiting for that 60% all summer long, and it is now fall. So let's get there, please. We did hit a sobering milestone this week. On the, on 9/20, the U.S. surpassed over 675,000 deaths due to COVID-19. And then 1918-19 influenza pandemic cost about 675,000 lives. We didn't have to reach that milestone. We have vaccination. We have prevention strategies. We didn't have to get there. So I am just going to end with asking everybody a couple of questions and then a thought about those. And my first question is, do you support local businesses, and do you want them to thrive? And the second is, do you want those local businesses to spend time, resources, which is money, to address people not following regulations like our mask regulation? If you answered yes to supporting local businesses and no to spending their resources and enforcing those and dealing with the Health Department trying to enforce those, you can help. And you can help by masking up. Mask up whether you want to or not. If not because of the order itself, maybe you don't care that we have an order. Don't do it because of that. Do it to support the businesses that you visit. Do it so that they don't have to put resources in to following up and handling the complaints that come in. But most of all, continue to be nice. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Well, at least it was good news about the clinic, the testing clinic.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, two things. Would you please put the address and the times for the clinic in the chat so that it's, you know, people like me that didn't quite get it all written down can capture it? The second thing is, is that I got a call just a couple of days ago from somebody claiming to be from the Indiana Department of Health asking about my vaccine status. And of course, I wasn't a person to verify that's who it was. Are they calling people? And I thought they had, you know, information about individuals in their own database.
I am not aware that they've been calling people to ask about your vaccine status?
To ask if I'd gotten vaccinated.
Yeah, I will check on that. I am not aware of that at all.
Thank you.
Interesting. So and just to verify two things. First, that the only vaccine provider that is even being considered right now for boosters is Pfizer, right? Okay. And the other thing is, is the testing site does not provide vaccines at this time?
That is correct.
Excellent. Okay, great. Thank you, as always, for the great information, and we really, it seems to have taken your right forever to get over that 60% mark, and we still need to get beyond that, too. It's a pretty low mark. So, all right. Thank you so much. All right, next we have Ambrose A.C. Management and Allison Moore for her last Wednesday visit with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me on this cloudy, doomy Wednesday morning, first day of fall. I'm excited for the, for the report that the Health Department provided. I know that they did so much work to get that testing site here, and we are so fortunate that we get to have that in Monroe County. So thanks to them. I know that that will be something that our community will definitely be using. I just have a few updates today, and they are just, just a few announcements, and they're very repetitive announcements. But I want to just let the public know that we do have that free service, the Monroe County Alert. It's on our homepage on the county website, and you can go in and sign up for that. And it allows us to send weather-related events as well as anything in regards of the pandemic. And so it just lets people know what's, what's happening and for them to be in the know of things. And it's a free service. So if you've not signed up for that, I encourage you to do so. We do have our blood drives scheduled for October, and we actually have those scheduled throughout for the rest of the year. And all of those are on our emergency management page. And you can also go to the redcross.org website to make your time slot appointment. And they will continue to be doing that time slot appointment, at least through the end of the calendar year, instead of just to come and make a donation at any time, just because they want to try to keep everybody safe and distance, and they've done a great job in that. So if you're hesitant, or you've not been able to donate blood due to the pandemic, and you've been fearful, they do have wonderful protocols in place. And so I encourage you now more than ever, because there is such a need for that blood. And so I encourage you to make, make that appointment if you can. And then it's the last Wednesday in September, and that is National Preparedness Month, which is such an exciting month for our office. And we have just a wonderful amount of information on our website. And so as a family, or a household, or even just any resident in Monroe County, if you need to make a family plan, or you would like suggestions for things to have in a to-go kit, or, or just have questions in general about how to start, or how to make your plan, or to make sure your plan is top-notch, there is wonderful information on the ready.gov website, which is linked to our homepage. And I encourage you to go and check out that information. And as always, even though I am leaving, the office number is 812-349-2546. And even though I'm departing, there are still staff that are, that are willing to help in any way with those plans and procedures. And so if you have any questions about that, we are always available to help however needed. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I just want to wish you the very best for your exciting new ventures.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Going to miss you.
Likewise.
Yes. So sad. We are going to miss you, and we're going to miss your updates, but we'll know that you're, you have staff trained and at the ready to continue your good work. And yes, we will, we will miss you. So thank you. Thank you again. Our next item is an update on the highway, but we're going to hear this today from Ms. Purdy, because Lisa Ridge is at a conference. Good morning.
Good morning. Lisa was kind enough to share with me that they are finishing up on the paving of the roads. They have cash crews and brush crews out. However, the, the rain is affecting their schedule quite a bit right now. So she also wanted me to remind everybody, as always, you can report a problem on the website. So that's all she had for me to share with you.
Great. Thank you so much. And we won't ask if there are any questions. What is the vituinous mix now? All right. Thank you so much. And we also have Ms. Nestor Jellen from the Planning Department, who has an update for us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. I just want to provide you with a quick update on our county development ordinance. We're going to have our online portion of the meeting. That's going to be Thursday, September 30th, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. The Zoom link information is on the county website, co.monroe.in.us. It's also on our monroe.cdo.com website. This is going to complement the in-person meetings that we had earlier this month at the county park shelters. So if you were unable or uncomfortable to visit in person, we encourage you to come to this virtual meeting. What we'll be trying to do is break the public up into breakout rooms via Zoom with the help of tech services and try to engage smaller groups of people in understanding what their current zoning is, current use permissions are, and then talking about the draft zoning map, which, of course, is also online. If anyone has any questions or wants to hear more about the meeting, they're welcome to call our office, 812-349-2560. It is recommended that you try to zoom in with a device that you're able to read the screen, just because there'll be some materials on the screen for you to look at, and also we'll present with staff. So that's the end of it. So Thursday, September 30th, 5:30 p.m. on Zoom. We hope to see you there.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm just pleased that you're doing all these public meetings. Thank you for that.
Yeah. And the folks I talked to at these, at these meetings that were held at parks, and fortunately, the weather was great, were really happy to see that they're being asked to give their input before the planning commission has even talked about this particular module. They're really impressed with that. And so this is one opportunity to have input, and it's important to do so as soon as you can if you have concerns about particular uses for property or density. So I'm really grateful for the planning department and their work on this. So thank you for that. All right. Let's see if there are any other departments that wish to offer an update. You're on the wrong screen. I do not see any. So with that, we are now on the portion of our agenda where we accept public comment for items that are not on our agenda. You will have a total of three minutes to speak. At 2:30, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, you have 30 seconds to wrap up your statement. And this three-minute time limit also applies to all of our other agenda items with public comment. And just a note, please, that we cannot accept comments on the Seven Oaks Appeal as that has been an item taken under advisement. So please raise your hand if you'd like to offer public comments, or nine if you're on the phone. And, oh, Mr. Shelton. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber. Just want to take advantage of this opportunity to make sure the community is aware that Fall's training for CASAs will happen and start in just about a month. It'll be October 18th through November 10th. You can go to monroecountycasa.org and click on the volunteer link and get further details. Then after the training, you'd be sworn in by Judge Galvin and Judge Harvey and work with the staff to be assigned a case. You get to agree to a case or not to a case, and for some reason, what they offer you won't work for you. Perhaps it's got too much travel, maybe one of the children's two counties away in a foster home, for example. And then you work the case with one of the CASA staff, so you're not out there all by yourself. Your main job is to be a set of eyes and ears for the court, so that whichever judge is handling the case has the best information they can, the most complete information, so that they can make decisions, because they are the person who's in charge of fixing things. You're not. A typical case will last a couple of years, so they ask that volunteers agree to stay with it for at least that long, although there's no, no, no ropes tying you. We do need more volunteers. The last data we got, which is two months old now, we had 18 children waiting for a CASA, and I'm sure it's gone up. One of the things that sadly we're experiencing, that Kristen Boucher, the director, reported to the county council a few weeks ago, is we're seeing more violence toward the children. The frustration in families, the stress caused by the COVID is sadly impacting their relationships. And so we're having more children having to be removed from their homes because they've been abused. In the past, it's usually they've been more being neglected. So please think about this. The trainings will be 5:30 to 8:30 Monday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. They're hoping to be able to do it face-to-face, of course, with masks and physical distancing, but they won't decide for sure for a couple of weeks to see what this trending is going to do. So thanks for the opportunity to spread that word. And if you know anybody who think would be a good CASA, make sure they know about it. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Shelton. We appreciate you being here today and this important message. It looks like we have Ms. Galvin, Natalia Galvin. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Natalia Galvin. I'm a Monroe County resident, also the Ninth District Chair of the Latino Democratic Caucus, and Executive Board Member of Monroe County now. I'm just commenting once again to support the expansion of Election Central at its current location in support of our county clerk. In my capacity as a Ninth District Chair of the Latino Democratic Caucus, we tabled in support of the events surrounding National Hispanic Heritage this weekend and talked with numerous Monroe County residents about their experience, early voting, their considerable wait time, and the inconvenience it caused for the multiple times they had to attempt to vote if they couldn't stick it out the first time. And as an Executive Board Member of Monroe County now, we also tabled this weekend along with the League of Women Voters and NAACP, and had good conversations there, too. I also reiterate that voter inconvenience is voter suppression. I also took time this week to drive past the Old Napa Building. And I urge you to consider how moving Election Central would further negatively impact early voting. Waiting in any line at one of the most heavily trafficked intersections on Third and Walnut, ingesting those fumes, and just in one of the busiest intersections in Bloomington, would make early voting a far different experience than waiting with the convenience of buying from Bloom Foods or Hopscotch at our current location at Seventh and Madison. So we encourage you to really look at just expanding the current location. Thank you for your consideration.
Great. Thank you. And really, that's, hopefully, you will share your comments with the election board, because those are important. Next, we have, looks like... Sorry, my screen is... Pranima Bose?
Good morning. Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to echo the previous speaker. I'm a Monroe County resident and just representing myself. But I did help several neighbors who are in their 80s, and also my mother, who was in her 80s vote in the last election cycle, and was pretty disheartened that the lines were so long for early voting, since they were elderly people and we had to reschedule the whole plan to vote. So I just want to encourage you to do everything you can to make voting easier in this county. It's very discouraging that the Supreme Court has gutted the Voting Rights Act and that the Indiana State has released redistricting maps without sufficient public input. And it's just really important that we make, allow voting to be easy for everybody across the ideological spectrum and everyone who is in our district. And so anything that you can do to increase, to support county clerks, the county clerk's request for more space, I think, would be a real gift to the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we are waiting on the election board's response, and I do hope you share your comments with them as well. Can you bring the next person up? I cannot see on my screen very well here. Sarah Bowerly-Dosman. I cannot read my, the printing is very small.
Sarah. Thank you, Commissioners. I also, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Wonderful. Thank you. I also want to echo the previous two commenters on my support for expanding Election Central. I am the elected Democratic Party Precinct Chair for Perry 19, and I'm also speaking in my personal capacity. The big thing here is that it's important for us to expand access to voting, because as we saw in 2020, the lines were way too long, which places undue burden on citizens who are trying to vote. My husband and I both had to take turns leaving the house at like 6:30 in the morning to stand in line. And while the other watched our children, I just think about the single parents and others who have early morning shifts, that this did not work for them. It's also really, one of the things that's wonderful about early voting is that because it's centralized, it's easier for people to get to the right place. We have a lot of renters in our community, and when they, when they move in between elections, they don't quite know where their precinct is. And if they go to the wrong precinct and they vote with a provisional ballot, that gets thrown out. I know in 2018 that a lot of students at IU voted at, voted on IU at the IU Memorial Union only to have their ballots thrown out. When people can vote early, that becomes less of an issue. And the, the other issue here is that, as Commissioners, you have the ability to expand the Election Central space in a way that we can actually get this accomplished. I'm sure that all of you are very familiar with the fact that the election board has a Republican who can veto any additional voting sites, and Republicans historically have used their position on the board to do that. And so I don't, so I strongly recommend to you all that you use your position of authority to make it easier for people to vote, rather than passing this off onto the election board that doesn't have, where at least some of, at least one of the people on that board may not have the interest of the community in mind in terms of making it easier for everyone to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, just a reminder that we do provide space. We've had discussions about facilities and potential uses for them with the Election Board. We're waiting on their response, and it is up to the Election Board to establish satellite voting locations for early voting and/or developing a vote center system. So, our tasks are limited, as the county Commissioners. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a statement today? David Gamache?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, good morning.
I'm a professor of tax law, health law, and also with some interest, and I've written non-election law before. Let's be clear. This is a hard time, our democracy is under threat. The Republican Party of Indiana has created a system whereby the Republican Chair in each county can effectively veto most plans that would expand voting rights or voting centers. There is limited ability for the county Commissioners, or, you know, the Democratic Party, or any other local officials to take any action to prevent what is effectively voter suppression and threats to our democracy. There is one plan on the table that has actual support, can actually pass, that the county Commissioners have the ability to enact. The statements that have been made about voting center expansion, satellite locations, can all be vetoed by the Chair of the Republican Party. By putting those out as alternative proposals, when they are not realistic, without a guaranteed commitment from the Chair of the Republican Party of Monroe County, effectively, this is an attempt to deceive the electorate, and is an attempt to excuse, to avoid responsibility for one of the most critical issues facing our time in this county. I view, with no exaggeration, a vote to do anything other than expand voting rights at Election Center, the only option on the table that cannot, at this time, be effectively vetoed in the interests of voter suppression, as a threat to our democracy, as an attempt to aid voter suppression, I will make sure I do everything in my power that anyone taking such a vote is held responsible and that history remembers the actions taken. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we can provide facilities, but the plans, as you note, are up to the Election Board, and we've offered a number of options, and we're waiting to hear back from the Election Board on what we've offered. So, please pass your thoughts on to the Election Board. We would appreciate that. Okay, so with that, we will move on to our next agenda item.
Move approval of the minutes for September 15th, 2021.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
One scrimmer's area, and that's all.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for September 22nd, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you. And actually, those are the minutes from September 15th. We have a run date on our agenda. All right.
That is what I said. Yeah.
Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, September 22nd, 2021, and payroll September 24th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $1,811,948.95, $594,219.54 was for Regal, Inc., for pay application number one for the Rogers Street Bridge number 908 deck overlay, followed by $297,340.67 for August food and beverage tax distribution. Finally, $257,634.91 was for September Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield claims fees and premiums. As far as payroll, the total was $1,606,583.44. $1,134,154.96 were for the gross payroll wages, and the remaining $472,428.48 were for all the payroll-related claim items like taxes and retirement.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Okay, let's see if there is any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or hit star nine. I do not see any, so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims docket, accounts payable September 22nd, 2021, and payroll September 24th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. I will note for the record that we have received a report from the Treasurer. This is a report for August of 2021, and we will move on then to new business.
Move to approve Lutz Overgut Cooper James Engineering Retainer Agreement. Fund name, County General, Ann Parks operating. Fund number 1,01179, in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Ms. Whitmer joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. This retainer agreement is for small projects or questions that we may have, and it's not to exceed $5,000. It does expire January 31st, 2022.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I was at the Parks Board meeting and heard about it a few weeks ago.
Makes sense to have these agreements in place in case they're needed quickly. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. And seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Lutz Overgut Cooper James Engineering Retainer Agreement for Parks?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-44 and 2021-45, Parks Surplus Property.
Second.
Was that a second?
Yes, sorry.
I kind of heard it, but I wasn't sure.
Yes, I second, I second.
We have a motion in a second. Please tell us all about it, Ms. Whitmer.
We're asking for a two surplus resolution. One is for a 72-inch Ferris mower, and the other one is a 20-foot shipping container, scaffolding, and shade cloth. We're going to the County Council on September 28th to ask for funds to replace the 72-inch Ferris mower. We hope for the best, but we would like to get the surplus situated beforehand so we can use it as a trade-in.
Excellent. Good planning. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Good idea.
Commissioner Giffens?
That shipping container, and what it was proposed to be used for is just, is an emergency shelter for kids. It's just really strange, so I'm glad that we're able to get rid of it.
All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or hit star nine. I see none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-44 and 2021-45?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve a grant agreement with Indiana Department of Health. Fund name, Vax Administration Reimbursement. Fund number 9158, in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Ms. Cockrell here. Good morning.
Certainly, so we started vaccinations back in January. The state has been working to bill insurance on behalf of the local health departments, and that is what this grant agreement is about. So, it is really about the State Department of Health being able to forward those funds to us for the administration portion that's been received for vaccinations. And then we'll be going to council to appropriate those funds so that we can further distribute those to our partners who have actually been helping us do that. So, some of those funds will go to IU and so forth. So, that's what we intend to do with those funds, and remaining funds will be used to provide vaccinations going forward.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
It's always nice to get reimbursements.
Yes, it is. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, these are for like the flu vaccines and things like that, right? Or which vaccines are they for?
This is for COVID-19. So, the vaccinations we've done since January, and so that's why this grant agreement is for the calendar year of 2021, and we're just now getting it. So, things are a little slow and behind, but once we get this in, then we should start seeing some of those reimbursements.
Fabulous.
Excellent. Thank you so much for working on this. It's always, it's always helpful. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or hit star nine. Don't see any, so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the grant agreement with Indiana Department of Health?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, and our next item, please.
Move to approve another grant agreement with Indiana Department of Health. Fund name, Public Health Emergency Preparedness. Fund number 8104, in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Tell us about this one, please.
Well, isn't it appropriate that we are doing this during Preparedness Month, right? So, this is a grant renewal we've received since it started. It used to be referred to as bioterrorism, then has, you know, changed over time. So, this is our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Fund. The grant cycle, again, we're a little behind. The grant cycle is July through June. So, we did get our award letter early, and so we were able to go to council and take care of that early on, but this is the official grant agreement for this grant term for Preparedness staff.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm just pleased that we think ahead here, so.
Absolutely.
Lessons learned over time.
Painfully learned in some situations, I think.
Yeah, of course. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen or hit star nine on the phone. And I do not see any, so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the grant agreement with Indiana Department of Health for Public Health Emergency Preparedness?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve an agreement with Flot Group, Inc., for the Sheriff's Department. Fund name, Sheriff Commissary. Fund number is not applicable, in the amount of $16,500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sheriff Swain could not be with us today, so, Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us all about it?
I will do my best. It's kind of a new, a new system, so I'll describe it as best as I can. The price is $16,500, and it's for the installation of six cameras at various intersections across the county, and an implementation fee at $250 per camera, so that's the total 16,500. If it extends to the next year, I think the $15,000 or $2,500 per camera will continue to occur and accrue. What this does is that these cameras would be placed in a position where it would be able to identify license plates of vehicles passing by. That way, the Sheriff's Department would be able to be alerted if there was a, you know, amber alert or a silver alert, where, you know, there's a problem associated with a license plate in either of those two events. I think typically, I think 90% or 90-plus percent of those, that data would be entered by a third party, so that, you know, it would flash, you know, an amber alert gets entered into, and if that captured it, it would flash and alert the Sheriff's Department that that vehicle was in that area. Same with a silver alert. There is an opportunity that if the Sheriff's Department had a license plate number that was associated with one of its cases, it could enter that into the system to determine where that, if that vehicle had been in that, in the area recently. The Sheriff's Department, and if you look, I think it's Section 9 of this agreement, the only information that really the Sheriff's Department has or would get from this would be if that identified license plate number popped up, and so that would be the information that the Sheriff's Department would have. So, I know I've had questions, well, could somebody do a public records request for all the, the, all the driver or the license plate numbers that went through this intersection? That would not be a record that one we keep and maintain, so those would not be. However, if it was used in a law enforcement event, that would be a number we had, we would have to go through where it's at in the investigatory process in order to determine at what point in time could that be released, because there are processes and protections built into the public records law for that. So, essentially, these cameras will go into various intersections. We haven't finalized which intersections those would be, so I don't have a list for you today, but as those get finalized, we certainly would have that information. I guess I would turn it over to you, see if you had any questions at this point. I think I've gone through most of it, but it's a fairly new program, and it's kind of one that I think the Sheriff and the Sheriff's Department thinks would be really helpful in particularly emergent situations with amber alerts and silver alerts.
Excellent, thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Actually, Mr. Cockrell answered all three of my questions.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I think we heard about this at a work session, and so, yeah, I'm pleased actually that we're trying this out. Right now, this is only a contract for a year, correct?
Yes. Actually, I believe we can terminate it at any time, but we know the fees associated with it.
Yeah, yeah, and when we talked about this at the work session, it was discussed that if there are better places to put them, that they can move them fairly easily as well. So, yeah, we appreciate you being here and discussing this today. We did ask a lot of questions at the work session, so that's helpful. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Looks like we have Dave Askins, B Square Beacon. Good morning.
Good morning, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you to Jeff Cockrell for answering a lot of the questions that I would have asked if he had not already answered them. One remaining question I had was, could the county put these cameras inside Bloomington city limits? Just sort of as a theoretical question, and a follow-up to that, are any of the potential locations in fact located inside Bloomington city limits? Thanks.
I would say theoretically, yes, they could be. I think, and I say that with respect to, I know that we're talking with- I think, and I say that with respect to, I know that we're talking with, with Indot on, on their roadways and those kind of things. We really want high traffic, high volume intersections, I think is, is the point. So I think they could be. I don't know if any of them are at this point. I think potentially, but I'm not, until we get a final list, I'm not sure exactly where they're going to go, but I think that is a potential.
Thank you. Thank you for the question and thank you for responding. Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Flot Group for the Sheriff's Department?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. We don't have any, do we have appointments today?
Yes, yes, we have one.
Please offer that. I thought we did, but it's not on here.
Oh. Uh, yes, we are going to appoint Jenna Perrow to the Affordable Housing Commission. That's a motion. Sorry. I moved that we.
It turns cold and rainy and what happens to all of us? Right, yeah. I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. I could have sworn we had somebody and I couldn't remember and it's not here. All right. With that, we appreciate her willingness to serve. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the appointment to the Affordable Housing Commission?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. So just a couple of announcements today. Just a reminder to everyone that the Commissioners are holding virtual office hours at various times and days throughout the month. All you have to do is check out the county calendar at co.monroe.in.us at the bottom of the page. And you can join one of us via Zoom for office hours if you have questions or concerns about anything going on in Monroe County. We'd love to hear from you. Also, as Ms. Nestor John discussed earlier, the, there is a Zoom meeting scheduled on September 30th at 5:30. This will be via Zoom to regarding the proposed zoning map for Monroe County. This is a great time to ask questions, especially about permitted uses. Go to monroeceo.com for more information. And we are looking for applicants for board and commission positions, especially redistricting commission and also economic development. But every board and commission could potentially have openings. So if you are interested, go to co.monroe.in.us and fill out an application. Just go to the search bar, Boarding, Boarding Commission application, and you will find that. Again, our thanks to Tech Services and Ms. Dayton. Appreciate your hard work at every one of our meetings. See if my colleagues have anything else to add.
No, I don't.
So with that, how about 11:15 for our work session start time? Does that work? Good? Excellent. So we're going to adjourn the regular meeting now and our work session begins at 11:15 right here on the same Zoom channel. Thanks, everyone. See you soon.